Hammond City Council, Public Hearing Agenda, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, five thirty P M. Roll call please.
Councilman Diveterio? Councilwoman Gonzalez? Councilman Wells?
Here.
Councilman Andrews?
Present.
Councilman Leon?
Public hearing now. Hammond City Council Regular Session Agenda, April twenty-second, five thirty P M. Roll call please.
Councilman Wells? Are you here?
Here.
Councilman Diveterio?
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Councilman Leon? Councilman Andrews?
Present.
Stand for our prayer please. Most gracious, loving, eternal Father, we thank you on this day, for this is the day that you've made. We shall rejoice and we shall be glad about it. Father God, we thank you for what our eyes have seen and what our ears have heard. We thank you, Father God, as you continue to move in the hearts and minds of these your precious people. I ask that you continue to bless our city, state, and country. But most of all, the heavenly Father, I ask that you continue to let your light shine upon Hammond. Continue to bless our fire department, our police department, men and women that serve us in this city. They protect us and keep us from all hurt, harm, and danger. I ask that you continue to bless my colleagues, each council member, their family, and the districts in which they represent and serve. I ask that you continue to touch our city administration, from our mayor, all the way down to those that work in our parks and grounds. Father God, just continue to touch everyone. If there's ever a time we need you, we need you right now. And we thank you just for who you are, because it was you who chose us and not we ourselves. But most of all, the heavenly Father, I thank you that you do not treat us as our sins deserve. But most of all, that you do not treat us as man treats us. So on tonight, the heavenly Father, my prayer is that everything will be done decent, order, pleasing your sight. Therefore, you will get all glory, all honor, and all praise, because it all belongs to you. In our darling son, Jesus Christ's name, we pray, amen. At this time, I act that all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'll ask for approval of our April eighth, twenty twenty-five minutes from our meeting, please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells? Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye. At this time, we'll have a presentation of our audit. Michelle will be coming up to give us a presentation. As I ask, I'm going to ask Ms. Michelle to start off with any negative findings at the beginning of her report, please.
Hello? All right, uh, so the two bullet points before, uh...
One second, Michelle, before you start. Uh, the council will receive an email copy of this report.
As, as well as the presentation?
Yes.
Uh, was submitted to legislative auditor, has been reviewed and approved, and is available on their website. It's also submitted to the Federal Audit Clearing House and also has been accepted. Um, financial statements did have an unmodified opinion on, um, the actual financials. Uh, I will say, the report on internal control, in accordance with government auditing standards, we did have two significant deficiencies. Uh, the first one is, due to the turnover of the key personnel, which was mainly Laura and Lacey, uh, the internal controls of the financial reporting were not operating as designed. Um, so that means that they relied on us, the auditors, more so. This has happened before with you guys, uh, not last year, but a year before. We also had some situation. The other significant deficiency we had is related to the building, the building permit, the permit. Um, access to the new, um, building permit software, when it was set up by the third-party software provider, they did not limit the access to unauthorized units. So we ran into a couple of, um, everything we tested is fine, but if somebody could take the page, they would have access to that. Um, so that is a significant deficiency. I do know that it has been through a trial, and it did, uh, through forty-five.
When I have, can you hear me? Okay, when I have questions, do I have to raise my hand, or, or what? Because I'm saying, or do I let you go through the whole presentation?
Go ahead and ask me about this now.
Okay. On the building, on the building permit, I'll explain it to me again, please.
Okay, so when the software provider set up, this is where we talked about, like, the IT. Um, when they set up the actual protocol, it, it allows individuals to have access to it that were not necessarily authorized to upgrade certain stuff. When we did do our testing, a little bit of, you know, the area of course, one thing, okay? The individuals in the process, and you can't move to another step until one item is approved by, you know, the different, whether it's getting, you know, state inspector, building inspectioner, or, 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 so on and so forth. Um, but they did have somebody put this on there, that they had to take off, called testing area. That those, uh, like, what you're doing, how you're doing. Hello? Um, the whole thing, I read on the, we did have some testing, and that was just part of the area. We did a single audit, we did an audit of the grant program, a lot of the kinds of things. There was no finding, especially an unmodified opinion, and we did audit the airport's, the, 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 the. Right, this is a year-to-year comparison of your government-wide figures. See, your government-wide figures, um, are a little different than your, um, down-to-date figures that you've been saying. This includes all of your long-term and short-term assets and others, creating these numbers with future capital assets as well as your long-term debt, the pension liability. Uh, the total assets increased a little over a million dollars. Uh, that is a result, uh, basically, of the capital improvement, your, um, construction in progress, which is also offset by your depreciation and debt. The total liability is an increase, um, of six point six million. That is directly related to your pension liability between the three, you know, municipal and the private. Those numbers come from a separate report that is audited by a separate, um, entity, given to the legislative auditors to do reviews, and then we get those numbers from them. Evaluation date was as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, so that's a year behind. So, as you are aware, the market is going up and down, up and down, and, and, and. That number, that increase, also contributed to the increase in expenses and time junkies. Now, your total net position did increase about five hundred and fifty-one thousand, so that's great. Your total revenues increased four point one million. That was mainly the, uh, you had increases a little bit in Apple Horn, you had an increase in charges for services, and you also had an increase, obviously, in the capital brands, related to, you started using some of the, some of the ARK funding, and you had the airport, and, and, and. Um, and then your total expenses, they increased, um, almost four point five million. Part of that was the pension. Uh, you also had given some raises, uh, there was a little bit of sanitation costs, um, and then some repairs and maintenance of some water and sewer lines. And again, remember that this is all in chief of all, all long-term and short-term liabilities. This is through all of the, 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 the. The next page is your revenue comparison. This is also going to be in your, uh, management's discussion analysis, which is a different, uh, question. You will see that your sales tax did increase about four hundred and seventy thousand. That was about a two percent decrease from prior year. Uh, your Apple Horn package increased about three hundred and fifty-one thousand. Your capital brands and contributions, almost three point four million. Your operating grants and contributions decreased slightly, um, pretty, uh, uh, charges for services, like I mentioned before, increased about three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Uh, franchise fees decreased slightly, gaining revenue as well. Uh, pension contributions did not, so, to the magnitude, uh, increased three point two. Your other revenues decreased, um, some, charges for services for water and sewer did increase, you know, fourteen million. And the grants and contributions for water and sewer increased four hundred and fifty thousand, so that was a great one. That has to do with the hard, you, you, you. To the next slide, and the next slide is basically to check those numbers just in a bar graph. Page, and then the next page. Stop me again, if you have any questions. So after, we come to defense comparison, again, government-wide, on government-wide basis. Um, you will notice your general government did increase slightly. Economic end development, also, public safety increased, which is the police fires. Uh, that again, had to do a lot with the pension, uh, expenses. Uh, not, not fire, the police department, the employer contribution increased two point two five percent. Um, I said twenty-nine, we also had surgery, so that was also a part of that expenditure. And then you also had an increase of health insurance as well. I think that, uh, public works, same situation, um, and everything else is pretty comparable. All right, your two, and I want to say, main operating funds, your main operating fund is your general fund. The sales tax fund is also very key, um, to, to operations. Your general fund is your operating fund. The fund balance decreased about five hundred and five thousand, leaving an ending balance of a little over three million. And again, um, I think the revenues increased maybe about a hundred and twenty-seven, but the expenditures had increased related to the fire and the sanitation costs. So, that has to do with the pension and the security, uh, contributions. Uh, I have spoken before about the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, and that they recommend that a general purpose government maintain an unrestricted fund balance of no less than two months of either regular general fund expenditures or revenues. We go with expenditures, because that's more of what they're, y'all are operating off of, in case something happens. So, that would be about six million dollars. Now, you have three million in the general fund. You have three point three million in the emergency, um, reserve fund. So that gives you about six point three million total, if something happens, and that is a little over two months of expenditures. So you're in good shape with that. Uh, the sales tax fund balance decreased, um, three point nine million, leaving an ending balance of about four million. Um, you'll see, again, it decreased two percent for the collections, but it still has a healthy fund balance. This, um, graph is just the general fund. It does not include your emergency reserve. Uh, but this will show what it is compared to what the recommended amount is for the GFOA. But again, if you add your three point three, you will be right above that recommended amount. And this graph is just the sales tax fund, um, collections over the last five years. Uh, you can see that it has slightly decreased, um, the last three years. Uh, I don't know, um, if we're on target this year, uh, but say, why are we not yet?
Yeah, we're a little bit, uh, about two hundred thousand over, actually, man.
Excellent.
So.
So this is, just for your information, to know where you all stand as far as it goes.
One question, ma'am. Just like the mayor just stated those numbers?
Mm-hmm.
Why I can't see those numbers?
Uh, well, I, the numbers are basically on that left side of the, um, can you see the screen? On the left side of the screen, where it shows, um, like, twenty-eight million five. Yeah, and then for each year, it's gone down, like, it went down four hundred and thirty thousand, so it was a little bit more. Um, if I need to, uh, I could, next time, put...
And you should also see it on the year-to-date fund balance that Carolyn has sent to you, twenty-two.
Yeah, but also, here, if we went to the revenue comparison that I had provided earlier, it does show twenty-four and twenty-three's for the sales taxes. I could always add another one to make it, like, show the last three years on this revenue comparison, if you want.
Yes, ma'am, yes, that'll be fine.
Okay, yeah, so, she'll go back to the revenue comparison and show him. There you go. So this one is the actual numbers for twenty-four and twenty-three. It shows the change, but what I can do, if you want me to, I can do a separate one, straight, strictly for the sales tax, if you'd like. Um, actually, would you want me to maybe take all of these and do the last five years? Just do a, another, um, another slide for all of these for, over the last five years?
Yeah.
Okay.
And when we do that, the notation of what was going on, whether it was building, uh, item, or, 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 because we look pretty much less, I would guess you would call it, because people were shopping at home, staying out.
Yeah, you might have had the sales tax, because of the rebuilding. Guess I need to put it a little closer.
It worked just then, when you did that.
All right.
Yeah, texting, yeah.
I apologize. Last five years. Last five years. And then I have, the last page was just a summary. Uh, audited financial statements received an unmodified or clean opinion. Your net position increased five hundred and fifty-one thousand. General fund did see a decrease of five hundred and five. Sales tax fund saw a decrease of three point nine. Once you all, once you all get the reports, please read pages five through fifteen, which is Management's Discussion Analysis. It's a good comparison of current year to last year, and any variances and any activity that occurred. And, uh, if y'all don't have, if you have any questions, let me know.
No one behind you?
Christopher Wells, Six Ten Mooney Avenue, in Hammond. So, my first comment is, how can the council ask any informed questions if you don't have the presentation or the audit report? How can, how can you all ask any questions on our behalf, if you don't have this information before tonight? I mean, it's great that they did the presentation, but, I mean, I heard President Kip say that you guys will get the presentation afterwards. That's the first comment. My second, well, the question is, um, you mentioned that the significant deficiency has happened before, in twenty-three and twenty-four. Twenty-two and twenty-four, okay? And so this one was attributed to personnel no longer employed by the city. So moving forward, what's the solution? That's my first question. The second question is, did we pay additional funds for your agency to prepare the annual financial statement? Okay, so, no, specifically, they hired you for your professional services to perform an audit. Did they have to pay additional money for you to actually prepare the annual financial statement? Because that was a deficiency. So was that additional?
Oh, okay, okay. So, the deficiency is related to, and how they have to, um, I think I asked you a question the last time. Um, the deficiency is related to the ability for them to take financial... And to do that in accordance with Jack and with government law and standards. And when you only have a transfer of the money that they need to return over, they seriously are coming in or not... Have not been trying to turn. So then Laura took over from Sada. Sada had gone to China and she was... She was sort of like that. So people... So they were able to review that. Her and Casey and Lacy, all three of them, could have seen that. So we were able to review it and we just... So there's Jaz who's been there now. Um, to be able to afford it. That's what I'm talking about by this. We... We need to prepare the audit. If they have to be able to do it on the same... Like just to... The government side versus the client side. So, um, Jaz first, then Casey first, then... Uh, I'm scared. There's been... Sure, but, um, all involved in the training. Um, that's what you have to do. They provide the training, they go through, uh, the F O A. And it's just one... It's just... So maybe they're based on...
So did... So did it cost more money for you to step in and do some different things while we're... Personnel was short, or is that...
Yeah, we did do a little bit after stuff.
Okay, that's all, yeah.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
How much more money did we spend?
Yeah, is it... Where's that fee at in here?
Well, if you're already paying for a service and there's additional services they have to provide, the council should know how much more money we had to pay for that.
Yeah.
We paid the auditors what the council approved. I don't remember there being an increase related to this.
What she was saying was that we budgeted and they're paid a fee every year for their normal work that they're hired to do. She's making a comment that during the time of personnel changeover, there were the charges or something, and we had to pay her additional fee. I don't remember seeing anything that came to me about additional charges fee. That's all I'm asking about. Or is that a misunderstanding? Did you not get paid any more?
We had the audit and the non-attest service agreement too that you all had.
Yeah.
That was... That was the additional fee.
So what's a dollar amount? We're talking about a fee. Well, what is it? I mean, does anybody know? I mean, talking twenty minutes on the same thing.
Seventy-five hundred dollars, I think.
Okay.
The audit statement or...
So it costs us about an extra seventy-five hundred dollars?
Eighty-five, yes. Seventy-eight, I'm not sure.
Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but I... I seem to recall that in the past, for a number of years, we would have the auditors do this for us. It was a recurring finding. And at some point, Lacy, Laura, Casey decided, let's... Let's go get trained so that we can do this and avoid that finding.
Yeah, it was also a finding when Sada was here. Until Sada went and got the training as well. And went to all of the legislative auditor stuff and the G F O A. And actually, she came to, uh, some trainings in, uh, November that we go to as well.
So we're actually coincidentally, Carolyn and Casey are attending trainings tomorrow and Thursday. Um, I've not scheduled mine yet, um, but I will be also attending so that by the time of the next audit, hopefully, all three of us have the trainings that are required to avoid, um, this finding.
So with that being said, if I ask for a financial report in two months, all y'all should be trained well enough to give me a financial report, right?
That's correct. And actually, um, Carolyn sent, I believe it was Wednesday of last week, she sent, uh, the quarterly report that the council has requested. So she sent that last Wednesday. I think it might be titled Year-to-Date, um, Report, but you should have all received that. So we're... We're already doing that on a quarterly basis. That's something we weren't doing previously. Um, and we're giving that information right out of the accounting system.
And a lot of the training that they're also going through has to do with the governmental auditing standards for the footnotes. And, um, some of it is also the S A U P, which is the statewide audit.
Anyone else have any other questions? Thank you. Final adoption of ordinance none. Introduction of ordinance number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve a rezoning by Christopher... Christopher Wells to rezone one zero zero nine Mooney Avenue from R S dash three to R M dash three located in District Three. Charles Boucher.
Um, as I... Sorry. As I do whenever we do an introduction, I remind... Is this coming through? Can everybody hear me? There we go. Um, introduction is just a public notice that if introduced tonight by the council, we will have a public hearing on this matter, um, at the next council meeting, which I believe is May thirteenth, if I have the date correctly. Um, this was, uh, reviewed by our Planning and Zoning Commission, um, on April tenth. Um, they also reviewed it on April third at their work session. Uh, the recommendation was to deny, and that was recommendation three to zero. Uh, and the reason being was that they considered it spot zoning. That means that most of the surrounding zoning is not the requested zoning. Um, again, if introduced tonight, we'll have a public hearing on this where we can have both sides discuss, um, discuss this issue.
Anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council?
Yes, I make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Introduction number two.
Introduction of an ordinance request for a street renaming by Yanita Gay Andrews to rename East Hoover Street to Holton Hill Lane located in District One. Charles Boucher.
Again, this is an introduction. If introduced tonight, we'll have a public hearing on this, um, at the next council meeting. This was reviewed at the work session on April third and again, um, at the full commission meeting on April tenth. Uh, in this case, the recommendation was to approve, and that was three to zero.
Anyone from the public on this item? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council? I make a motion to introduce.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Resolution number one.
A resolution to approve Myrners Inn located at one one seven West Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three, to obtain an alcohol permit for a restaurant. The owner is Seafores Hospitality. Charles Boucher.
Uh, this is related to a change in ownership, and we have a representative here to discuss and answer any questions the council may have. They've met all the requirements, uh, that the city has.
Please state your name and city.
William Alak, Hammond. Basically, we just changing the name to match all the paperwork currently. Kind of what we did for Brady's back a while back and so forth.
Are you changing the name of the restaurant?
No.
So just the name of the owner?
Yeah. LLC, that's it.
You'd probably get some people who didn't like it if you changed the name of the restaurant.
Is anyone else from the public on this item? Any other questions, concerns from anyone from the council? You know, readiness before I call for a vote. Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number two.
A resolution to approve Nash Express located at six oh five Falcon Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, to obtain an alcohol permit for a convenience store. The owner is Q Two Inc. Charles Boucher.
Uh, this is also related to a change in ownership. Um, they met all the city's requirements, and we have a representative here to discuss and answer any questions the council may have.
Your name and city, please.
Darken, Aliyah, A.
Anyone have any questions or concerns on this particular item? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Resolution number three.
A resolution authorizing a demolition of property located at one one two West Green Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, located in Council District Three. Notification was sent to owners Lydia B. Adams Estate, three nine one five Madison Avenue, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, seven zero eight oh two Rodney Adams, P O Box one one... One nine one five Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four oh four. Midland Funding LLC, care of Eastern Group, P O Box three zero zero one, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, seven zero eight two one. Charles.
Uh, this is the first in the series. Uh, number three through nine are all demolitions. Um, these are part of our new demolition process. Um, we're hoping that you see a more streamlined approach now with us not having to rate each structure on a percent damage, but actually looking at, um, whether they pose a risk to health and safety. Um, so letters have gone out notifying the property owners that there is an issue, that this property is... Has been recommended for condemnation slash demolition. Um, we're asking for the council's approval so we can continue that process.
Is there anyone in the public here from... On this particular item? Any questions from the council? Make pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario? Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number four.
A resolution authorizing a demolition of property located at one one seven Perry Lane... Perry Lane, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, located in Council District Three. Notification was sent to owners, estate of Oliver Wells Junior and Rachel Wells, care of Erica McCray, two five zero nine Galish Shed Drive, Upper Melboro, Maryland, two zero seven seven four, heirs of estate of Oliver Wells Junior and Rachel Wells, eight ten B, Mooney Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three, heirs of... Excuse me. Estate of Oliver... Of Oliver Wells Junior and Rachel Wells, eight one one dash B, Mooney Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one. Rachel Wells, Centra R Wells, Phaedra Wells, four six zero four one, Darben Road, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one. Michael Wells, four six zero one three, Darben Road, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four oh one. Wells Brothers Developers Inc., Thomas Wells, three one zero, Mooney Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one. Parish of San Jefoa Sheriff, care of Civic Source, attention Leo Sayer, nine three five Gabriel... Gaviar Street, Suite one seven zero zero, New Orleans, Louisiana, seven zero one one two. Charles.
That's a lot to read. I'm gonna tell you guys. Uh, again, this is the second of these demolitions. We have photographs. Um, these are, I think, street view from Google of... Of the current state of the home. Um, all of these have serious, um, issues. So again, we're... We're asking for the council's approval to continue the process and, um, address these issues.
Anyone from the public here on this item?
Thank you, Charles, for making it known that there are serious issues on the property. The estate of Oliver Wells and Rachel Wells aren't aware of owning or having any interest in the building, but a sliver of land adjacent to it, so... Which they have no problem with the building being torn down, but they want it on record that they don't have a interest in the house itself. So the council can approve it to let you all go further with your, um, inquiries. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number five.
A resolution authorizing a demolition of property located at one one seven West Newman Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, located in Council District Three. Notification was sent to owners, Zabrina Laverne Conley, P O Box nine seven five Springfield, Louisiana, seven zero four six two, Taplin Tavok, one nine one eight eight, David Harris Lane, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three. Charles.
Uh, this is another property for which we're seeking the council's approval to continue with demolition process. Um, I'm not sure how current this particular photograph is.
Doesn't match what we have.
Right, um...
It looks much worse on what we have.
Yeah, 'cause they had started tearing it down. It's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I know what it is.
These demolitions are usually done as an ordinance. It's okay to do it as a resolution?
Yeah, I think to Councilwoman Wells... Uh, Councilwoman Gonzalez's point, I... I think what we're looking at in the photographs that were provided and... And the attachment is that structure in the back without the roof. I think that's why it looks so different. It kind of looks like a mobile home in what we have, but I think it's the same structure, just in the photograph that we have. It's... It has no roof on it. And to Councilwoman Wells's point, if they've started removing the structure, that would explain the difference.
Anyone from the public on this item? Any other questions or concerns from anyone from the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Resolution number six.
A resolution authorizing a demolition of property located at one two zero Moran Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, located in Council District Three. Notification was sent to owners, Augustine James, four six zero zero, Reddicks Lane, Monroe, Louisiana, seven one two oh two, Serenity Sober Living LLC, four six zero zero Reddicks Lane, Monroe, Louisiana, seven one two oh two, Serenity Sober Living LLC, one four five Macon Drive, Deli, Louisiana, seven one two three two, Civic Source, attention Courtney Arena, P O Box five zero 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 one, New Orleans, Louisiana, seven zero one one two.
This is another one where the... The picture you're looking at here from Google Street View may be a little bit out of date. Um, the photograph that was in the packet that is attached to the first of the demolitions uh, shows that a lot of the debris that you see in the left in the driveway has been removed. The... The house is actually behind the tree, uh, in this, uh, Google Street View. Um, it's the house that's in pretty rough shape.
Charles, what about that dog?
That does not look like the thing.
Yeah. You can actually see in that... That image that there... There's a compromised roof.
Again, it looks much worse on the more up-to-date pictures.
Charles, I have a question here. I see, uh, and maybe you can answer this, maybe not. Serenity Sober Living LLC. They have part ownership in this house or they... A property?
That's my understanding. When they... Uh, when they do the title search and try to determine who the owners are, um, that's who we're listing here, all the owners that come up in that title search. So we're obligated to reach out, give them notice that this property is... Is slated for condemnation, demolition.
Thank you. Anyone from the public here on this particular item? Any concerns or questions from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Resolution number seven.
A resolution authorizing a demolition of property located at three one one Reed Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, located in Council District Three. Notification was sent to owners, James Bichel, three one one Reed Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one. Charles, James Henry, E T... E T A L, three oh nine Reed Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three. Elizabeth Bichel, Bernard Bichel, three zero nine Reed Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three. Joanne P. Bush... Bashir, I'm sorry, three zero nine Reed Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three. Charles.
This one actually fairly matches the picture that's in the... The packet. Um, again, obvious signs of... Of compromised structure. Uh, we're looking for the council's approval to proceed.
Anyone here in... From the public on this particular item? Questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council. I make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number eight.
A resolution authorizing demolition of property located at four zero seven Washington Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three, located in Council District Three. Notification was sent to owners, Connor Lee Sheddrick, four zero seven Washington Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three, Brianna Jackson, one six eight zero, O'Neil Lane, apartment three four five, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, seven zero eight one six. Charles Boucher.
Um, again, this is a different angle than what's in the packet, but I think you can see in this picture, there's a serious compromised structure here. The roof is missing. Um, the picture in the... In the packet actually shows that significant wall damage is also involved here. Again, we're looking for the council's approval to proceed.
Anyone from the public on this particular property? Any other questions or concerns from anyone from the council? I make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number nine.
Oh, goodness. A resolution authorizing a demolition of property located at one three zero five Mooney Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three. Um, located in Council District Three. Notification was sent to owners, Unity Progressive Missionary Baptist Church of Hammond, Louisiana, Inc., P O Box one eight five three, Albany, Louisiana, seven zero seven one one. Unity Progressive Missionary Baptist Church of Hammond, Louisiana, Inc., formerly known as Unity Progressive Missionary Baptist Church of Hammond, Louisiana, Inc., thirteen oh five South Mooney Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three. Unity Progressive Missionary Baptist Church of Hammond, Louisiana, Inc., through its agent, Brother Wendell Anderson, one zero seven Miss... Mississippi Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four oh three. Unity Progressive Missionary Baptist Church of Hammond, Louisiana, Inc., through its agent, Reverend Jesse Matt Mangatz Junior, four six two five nine North Baptist Road, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one. Unity Progressive Missionary Baptist Church of Hammond, Louisiana, Inc., care of secretary Sister Brenda Keith, two nine eight six nine South Cafe Lane Road, Albany, Louisiana, seven zero one... One... Seven zero seven one one. Unity Progressive Missionary Baptist Church of Hammond, Louisiana, Inc., care of treasurer Sister Verna Anderson, one zero seven Mississippi Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three. Unity Progressive Missionary Baptist Church of Hammond, Louisiana, Inc., care of director Brother Evander Jackson, one one four five Moore Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one.
I present the Unity Progressive Missionary Baptist Church. My name is Pastor Jesse Mangatz. I stand here and I sit out there and look... Looked at all the block property that you have for demolition. I don't see none of them that sell drugs. I don't see none of them that have a gun that destroying the community, but yet still, you want us to demolish property that have no... That have no harm to nobody in the city. But drugs is killing our city, destroying family, messing up community. We have gun violence that doing the same thing. And also, you got the police department that brutalize citizens that paying their salary. Now, what you want to do, you should have looked at those things instead of trying to destroy property that people own around here. I think you got it all mixed up and all wrong. And I'm standing here to tell you, God don't like ugly. So what you're doing is wrong. And that's all I got to say to you. So do what you gotta do, okay? And I tell you what, we see who come out on the end. So what you need to do is start seeing cleaning up the city with drugs, gun violence. If you don't do it, you're gonna have another New Orleans right here in... In Hammond. Just watch it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say on this particular property? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Resolution number ten.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a submersible pump for the South Water Waste Treatment Plant from Delta Process Equipment Inc... I'm sorry, Dos... Delta Process Equipment in the amount of sixty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, including delivery, installation, and setup in eight to ten weeks. Charles Boucher.
Uh, this is a critical infrastructure purchase for our South Waste Treatment Plant. Um, currently, we have two pumps that are in operation. One of those pumps is an old pump. Um, according to our water and sewer superintendent, it's twenty-plus years old. Um, and he's very concerned as we move into hurricane season. Uh, it's currently not operating at full capacity, and his concern is that we have a major weather event. Um, our sewer treatment plant becomes inundated, and we have overflows at the plant. Uh, there is money in the sewer budget, water and sewer budget, to make this purchase. We don't have to move funds from anywhere else in the budget. Uh, because it is a critical asset, and we want to try to replace it sooner than later, um, we're asking the council's approval of the... The middle quote. Um, the lowest quote was actually sixty-two thousand six seventy-eight forty-six. We're asking for approval of the middle quote, which was sixty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. And the reason is, is that that quote would allow us to get this replaced in place working in eight to ten weeks as opposed to the low quotes twenty-eight weeks. So again, we're trying to get this replaced ahead of hurricane season.
Okay, anyone here in... From the public on this particular item? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council?
Yeah, Charles, how much they have in the budget?
How much does water and sewer have in the budget?
Yes, please.
Uh, I don't know their exact number offhand. I know that they... They have money in their budget to cover this. They've got some personnel money that was not used this year. I think it was reserved for some hires that they didn't hire, um, or they hired later in the year. So the plan is to take some of the funds from their personnel line item to apply to this purchase.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Resolution number eleven?
A resolution to approve funding for the sidewalk improvements project at two two three East Thomas Street with a three-way equal share of the cost of ninety thousand dollars, split between Sweet Haven LLC, the Hammond Downtown Development District, and the City of Hammond. The city's share of thirty thousand dollars will come from line item one zero zero two eight one zero zero dash five two zero one one seven. Contract services in the building departments, contract services in the buildings, building departments budget. Charles Barsher?
This is the project on the corner of North Cherry Street and Thomas, I think it was Richardson, clothing store that was there for a long time. It's right across from the City Hall complex courthouse building. They've redone the sidewalk on North Cherry on the, would that be the east side of their building, as well as the sidewalk from the corner along the front of their building, which would be the south side of the building. That was part of renovations to the building where they expanded the size of the building. Add some apartments they're gonna be bringing in retail. This goes back, I think, to twenty twenty-three. Again, it's one of those three-way split projects where the DDD, the building owner and the city basically agree to split the cost three ways because it's improvements to city infrastructure. So we're just asking for the council's approval to go ahead now if the project is completed and to reimburse the owner of the building, who's already paid for these improvements. And these are funds that are in that budget for this purpose.
Go ahead, Councilman Wells. So Charles, how much money do they have in the building permit budget?
The total budget? I don't have the answer to that. I know that this money is there. It's available for this project.
We haven't had houses tore down in three years. And I know the building permit, the building department budget should be big, but me myself, I don't see why we taking money out of this here when I have more houses need to be tore down in District Three. And I know, and I'm quite sure, I rode in, in Kip District today, they got a lot of houses over there need to be tore down. So if we taking money out of the apartment, the building department budget, I don't think this here fair. My opinion now.
So just to be clear, this isn't a different line item than the demolition funding? And the group of demolitions that were approved tonight is just the first round of demolitions? I expect that we'll have another group of demolitions possibly by the next council meeting. And talking with Joey Malazzo, our code enforcement supervisor, he wanted me to let everyone know that this is just the first round, that they're aggressively pursuing these blighted properties based on community feedback, council feedback, and they're gonna try to demo as many properties as within their budget.
But it goes back again, how much money? And it's a damn shame if you sitting up here and you can't tell us how much money in the budget. I'm saying, and then we just have a woman sit here and talk for twenty minutes telling us all of that. But you can't even tell us, Charles, how much money in the building department budget? You should have some type of number in your head, even if it's wrong.
I'll look that up for you right now.
Thank you.
I have one question right quick. In these type projects, you stated this was after the owner had completed this process. So was there any type of agreement that came before to make this decision on the three-way split? Or the three-way split is done after the project is done?
Typically, this would come before. I think in this case, because of changes in personnel, something fell for the cracks, the building owner has now done its part. Seems like the DDD had gone through their process, but there was some miscommunication with the city. So they're coming to us. I know the funds are there. They were there for this project. Again, it goes back a couple of years. We're not, we're not taking money from another area of the building department budget to cover this project.
Okay. Thank you. That wasn't my question at the start, but you answered it. Thank you.
Stanley Campbell, District One. What are my questions are, I've heard three times today where questions have been asked about the balances in certain departments. Is there a way that you guys can provide in your financial statements, the quarterly financials that y'all are providing, where you can provide the balance statements also, to where it can be tied back to it? And also, we can kind of look and see whether or not we're on par with the budget from that fiscal year? Is that possible?
I'm sure it is. And it's a lot easier to answer questions between hours of operation as well.
Wait a second.
It's a lot easier, oops, sorry. It's a lot easier for the city to answer questions during hours of operation. We can get with the accountant, she can get into the computer, and she can answer the questions as well. And also know what you're wanting to put in, and I'm sure she can put that in as well.
No, I'm actually speaking for the council. And when you guys actually put the financials on the line, like for them to come here and make decisions on some of the stuff that you guys are asking to be approved, if the financials that are being provided to them, can y'all provide that also with the balance statement? Because I heard it three, three times I've had, I've heard people ask about a statement for a certain department and numbers are being pulled out of thin air where you guys don't.
Not being pulled out of thin air, he's pulling them out of the line item counts that they're in.
No, the ladies who were up here, at first, they didn't know exactly what the, what the separate payment was. I'm, it's not an attacking question. I'm just trying to.
I don't see any reason why not.
Okay.
Councilman Wells, to your question, it looks like seventy-five thousand dollars were budgeted for demolition costs. It looks like we've spent about forty-four, almost forty-five thousand. There is an available balance of thirty thousand, two hundred dollars. That's what's available specifically to demolition.
Okay. But the building department, how much is the budget? How much we have in the building department budget?
One second. Are you looking at that in the year-to-date? That's what I was looking for. Yeah, that's what, if, I'm looking for it in the, what page is that, Councilwoman? With the building department?
Twenty-three.
Yeah, it wasn't there yet.
It starts on twenty-one.
That's good, Charles, you okay. She just, she threw a number out there, that's good. I just needed to know a number.
Yeah, so the way it breaks down is, the year-to-date quarterly summary that was provided to the council members, the building department has multiple funds, we'll call it. So there's a hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred dollars for the department. There, the administrative, administration side has, it looks like one point eight million total. Most of the line items come out of the administration side. So the demolition is in that, that item. Yeah, so those are the two main funds for the building department.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else on this particular item? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
No.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number twelve?
A resolution to review and ratify bids received on four seventeen twenty twenty-five for drainage improvements, F Y twenty twenty-five, project number four two zero one two, four two zero dash one two five zero four. Mitchell Roniger.
Hello, Mitchell Roniger, Spangler Engineering. As was stated, we opened bids for the drainage improvements fiscal year twenty twenty-five last Thursday. I had fourteen bids submitted for that one, which was really good to see, that kind of competition. The low bid that came in was under budget and is from a responsible, responsive bidder. Richard Price Contracting is the company that was the low bid. They've done work for the city in the past and familiar with them and comfortable with them doing the work. This is for drainage improvements and also some minor sidewalk improvements at eight locations. I can go through those if y'all wanted to hear.
Where are the locations at? I don't, I don't see, I didn't see it in here. It might be online, but I didn't have it in my binder.
Locations are South Holly Street, approximately sixteen hundred and eighty linear feet, Live Oak Drive. That's all the way from Natchez Street to Mooney Avenue. South Elm Street, it's actually work on South Elm Street, just south of Old Covington Highway, as well as some drainage improvements along Old Covington Highway, near Elm Street. Mooney Avenue, South Orange Street, East Illinois Avenue, that intersection there. Darrell Drive, South Laurel Street, and Haskin Street as well. Those are the eight locations.
On Mooney Avenue, where we supposed to stop it on Mooney Avenue? I think you and I had, we had talked about it.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Originally, it was planned to go from Palmetto, just south of Palmetto, up north to Mississippi Street. And, and that's where the plans are for now. We've looked at it, evaluated the drainage south of Palmetto, running down towards that canal, where we just did the cross culvert improvements there. It doesn't seem like there's any need for drainage improvements over there. You got one property, you got good slopes running from south of Palmetto down to the canal over there. And so it was determined, I think, that no other improvements were needed there.
So, see, it's amazing how I'm just not hearing this. And you and I, we rode around and we talked about it. The whole idea of this drainage project, it come up just not yesterday. It come up about three years ago, maybe four years ago. And they're in the process of building four more houses, where you talking about where that one house is. And that's why I tell you, you know, not only you, a lot of times, don't nobody know the future. And I can just go by what the homeowner is telling me. They're talking about building four more houses over there. And then we talking about a canal, and I know you have nothing to do with that. A bridge was put over there. And no telling how much money was spent on the bridge for two houses. So we spent X amount of money for a bridge. Even got a damn rail on the bridge, with a sidewalk ready down there. And on that, on Harold Street, on Natchez Street, we did a bridge. That's the first bridge we got done on Mooney Avenue. And yet, no rails or nothing done for the future for that street, but we talking about two houses. You know what I'm talking about there, right?
Yes, sir.
Only in the morning. So I asked this here, if we ride around, I could show you a lot of places where y'all done put sidewalks. There's no houses around. Y'all done put drainage, no houses around. And one thing about it, when y'all do stuff for me, I try to do right when it come to the taxpayers' dollars. I want, I always want to make the best decision. That's why a lot of times I switch. When I ask for stuff, if I see it ain't, it ain't serving no purpose. And I'm not gonna just sit up here and just blow the city money, the taxpayers' money. Let me make it clear. So that's why I'm saying that. But yet, I don't know if you, the ma, I don't know who made this decision. But see how easy it is for us to sit down and talk about it? And I don't have to say it in front of everybody. That's what I try to do every time when I meet with you guys, that we can sit down and talk and come with a decision that please the people in the community, not me. I'm not asking for this. I'm just going by what my constituents ask me for, and that's what I do every time. So we sitting here saying this here, Mr. Mayor, how we gonna do this here? And now, he's talking about stopping it on the end of Palmetto Street. And I talking about, and they already surveyed it all the way to the bridge. Hell, be exact, they surveyed it all the way to the end of Mooney. It wasn't gonna serve no purpose. And I say, no, you don't have to go that far back. I say, just stop it at the bridge. It wasn't gonna serve no purpose at first. Now, they done, they done already did the survey and everything. So now, my first time hearing it, he stand up here and tell me gonna stop on Palmetto Street.
I will say that since it did come in under budget, we can certainly look at including additional subsurface drainage along the east side of Mooney, from Palmetto down south to that canal crossing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, you see, I mean, the whole problem here, though, is like, you know.
To the plant?
Not all the way to.
No, not all the way to the plant. It stopped right before you get to Laniella Wells' house.
Yeah, but, you know, that could have been discussed though prior to, and it, you know, happens in my district a lot too. Like, you know, the changes happen, and we don't know anything about it. It's not you. I'm not, this is not directed toward you. And, you know, it's a lot easier sometimes, budget-wise and money-wise, if it's a little section to continue, instead of having to come all the way back. I mean, the price is gonna be better whenever you have it already there, instead of coming back for a little piece. I don't know what he's talking about over there, but in my district, it's the same thing. A lot of things get piecemealed like that or pulled out, not even knowing what's going on with it. And the communication needs to be better in the districts, especially, you know, representatives of the districts. I mean, need to know, you know, what's going on and changing. And it'd be nice to know, because we're the ones that deal with the people asking about it. So, but yeah.
These are items that want capital outlay budget, right?
Capital improvements, bud, yes, sir. Yep.
Yes. This, this, yeah, this was put on the list three, four years ago, I think. So this, this wasn't nothing that just popped up yesterday. Because they end up doing from Mooney Avenue, from Florida Street to Mississippi Street. That's what they, that's where they stopped it at. So it was supposed to go from Mississippi Street all the way to the bridge, past Palmetto Street on Miss, on Mooney Avenue. That's, that's how we had talked about it two years ago, one year ago. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna give us three months ago.
Yes, sir.
That's how we had talked about it. And when we talked about it, he has told me that they weren't gonna do it. And then I thought we were gonna get together again, and we didn't. But a lot of this stuff, because I see even over in the Sam district, and I see, we saying alternate. So is we gonna do it? Are we gonna do it or we not gonna do it? Because I noticed that, not on this here paperwork, I'm looking at some paperwork I read in the past, you know? Because, and I'm talking, how long you been asking for that, Councilman Sam?
Which one?
They, because I keep reading the word alternate. So, and when I see alternate, I don't know what that word mean, but I think it mean we might do it and we might not do it.
If we have the funds in the budget, if it comes in short on the budget, then we go ahead and we try to do something else in the city with that. This was approved at last year's outlay budget by the council.
Yes, sir.
So we good? Past Palmetto Street, right, sir?
That shouldn't be an issue. Yes, sir. Yeah.
Mitch, you recommending the base bid and alternate number one?
Just the base.
Just the base bid.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any other questions on this item?
Yes, she do.
Run, Roniger?
Roniger.
Roniger. So I was looking at the attachments that are on the website. Can you explain to me? I see such a range, wide range, from eight to forty-two in diameter for the storm drain size. So what determines what size drains you use? That's my first question. The second question is, are the contractors, do they have something in place to clean up all the dirt that's on the road, maybe even on the weekends? We have a lot of children in the community who are asthmatic, and it's hard to ride down those streets with the red clay dry after they finish. I go all across the city, and it's not like that everywhere. So is there something in place where these contractors are required to maybe use a street sweeper or something to clean up this access, access dirt?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The size of the drain pipes does vary. Typically, you're not doing eight inches unless it's a small yard drain, all the way up to thirty-six inch. That's determined based off of drainage analysis, how long of a stretch is of the roadway or properties are gonna be draining into that drain pipe. That pretty much determines what size pipe needs to go in there. If you got a five-hundred-foot stretch of road that's draining to a certain location, you need a fifteen-inch pipe. If you got a thousand feet worth of property roadway that's draining into the pipe, you need a larger pipe at that point. So that's where the size comes from. As far as cleanup goes, we're always on, trying to be on top of these contractors to make sure that they're keeping the sites clean. It is a challenge to have them continually cleaning up. It is something typically that we address at the end of the projects, make sure that everything is clean and back the way it was supposed to be. We do have erosion control requirements as part of these contracts that require the contractors to put silt fencing and hay bales and other things up to ensure that any runoff from, from the newly disturbed soil or properties gets caught before it makes its way into the drainage system or into the roadways. Periodically, absolutely, you can tell these contractors to go out there and clean it up if it's obvious, visible, that there's a lot of debris, dirt, coming from those construction activities. But to have it done on a, on a regular basis, every week, every weekend, it can be challenging to do that. But we certainly do try and stay on top of the contract as much as possible to keep the. But, we certainly do try and stay on top of the contract as much as possible to keep the areas, uh, clean while they're working.
Let me ask you this question. At the end of the site being completed, do you guys have to go back to check that off to make sure everything's straight?
Yes, sir. We walk, we'll walk the entire project, uh, with the contractors, uh, and identify, um, anything that sticks out like that. Um, uh, any excess dirt that needs to get cleaned up. Uh, locations where sod hadn't been installed, where it needed to be installed, um, broken concrete, a- all that little, uh, small, smaller items at the end of the project, we go through and make sure everything's done the way it was supposed to be done.
The reason why I was asking, I understand where Ms. Wells is standing, because I was checking out the site on M.C. Moore today. And, uh, I know that they're not through in certain areas, but it is a lot of dirt in the middle of the street, so. Anyone else have any questions on this item?
Thank you, Mitch.
Pleasure of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Pre.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Debitario?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrew?
Aye. Reports, Mayor?
Uh, once again, Wildlife and Fisheries has stocked the pond in Zomari with, uh, three hundred pounds of catfish, uh, approximately three hundred fish, so please get out there and enjoy, uh, fishing with kids, family, and, uh, have fellowship out there around the Zomari Park. Also, this, uh, May third, next Saturday, the first Saturday of May, uh, we'll have our Household and Hazardous Waste Recycling Day at Zomari Park.
Yeah, Pete, when did they, uh, do the pond? This past week, or?
Yes.
This past week? Okay, alright.
Any council reports?
Um, I wanted, who's, uh, I need to, having an issue with, uh, buggies, uh, again, uh, shopping cart buggies throughout Lincoln Park. What department is gonna be, who do we need to notify for that? What, I mean, everybody's got pickup trucks now, so which, which, uh, department needs to-
We'll take care of it. Depends on whose-
Yeah.
Project.
That's fine. There's about, you know, all starting to, yeah, all around the railroad tracks, and then all going into the side of the ditches and everything.
Linkin Park, right?
Yeah, Lincoln Park, that whole area.
Yeah, he, uh, Mr. Jewell, uh, council report.
John Johnson. I live in, uh, three zero four South Journal Persian Street. I came in a couple of weeks ago and was talking about some, uh, I think drainage issues, uh, infrastructure problems on the, on this spot where I live. Uh, the adjacent property to my property was built up to such that it's draining mostly the water into my property. Uh, there's a drainage problem across the street also from my property that also seems to be draining right through on the south end of my property. So, uh, I came in and asked that some investigation look into that to see, uh, if we could do some kind of change on that end of the block.
Is this new construction being built around you?
No. Yeah, um, I did speak with both Spangler Engineering and with our Streets Department. It seems like there's agreement that there's something going on under the road. You can, you can see it. If you go look at Street View, you can see there's some kind of subsidence that's happening with the road, which is causing water to collect on your property. So, we're looking at the best way to address that. Um, it may be a subsurface drainage issue. We need to figure out what's going on with the road first.
Um, just, just to be clear, it's not a new issue?
No, no, I, when I mentioned it to our Streets, uh, Superintendent, he was aware of the problem. I think he said they've gone out before and put fill. Clearly, that's, that's not the solution.
It never, it never dries.
Right, right.
Even though, uh, you may get some surface drying, still to walk and to cut the grass just with the lawnmower, push mower, it's soggy most of, most of the time. So, I believe if they had better drainage on that side of the road as well, maybe even some sidewalks, you know, would help drain the whole area, but the damage is done to my property and my home right now, and I want to try to see what I could do to salvage that.
So, all I can say right now is we're looking into it. I, I think that the consensus is it's a bigger problem than just your property. There's something going on with that street.
Not to me.
Well, not to you, but I mean, in order to address-
The engineer needs to get involved. If it's a little bit bigger than what Robert Williams can take care of. So, if the engineer, you're saying that the engineer has been contacted?
Yeah.
We'll stay on top of it. I'm sure you'll stay on top of it as well.
Definitely.
And he was talking about the trees, and you heard him say about the storm coming. Charles said that.
And we already have identified these two trees that are, and they decline in years. They started about five or six weeks ago cutting down the trees. I think one of the reasons why they didn't finish the tr-, the tree that they did cut was because of the problem with the moisture in the ground and trying to get the equipment there to grind the stunts. Okay, so I understand that it's difficult, but still, just leaving the property the way it was left, I, 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 I don't have an appreciation for that.
So, so why, why are the trees still, I, I think I've seen that rope around that tree for a while now. So, so what is the delay on that? I mean, they tagged them. Is there something?
I, I think you might be right. I think there was an issue getting access to the property without, well, I'm not making a mess.
For these other-
It's right there by the road.
Standing, the road is there, the concrete is there, but the road itself is part of the problem when you put the foots down to kind of support the equipment to cut the trees down. So, you know, therein lies, you know, my concern, because as long as it, the longer it takes, my house on the south end of it is still sinking.
I, I'm gonna see Robert Williams tomorrow, our Streets Superintendent tomorrow. I'll follow up with him. Like I said, at the last meeting, I saw him the next day, and I, I know he was gonna go out there and take a look at it. Um, I'll, I'll follow up with him tomorrow and, and find out where we are, uh, particularly with the trees. If, if the trees can be removed, um, let's get those out of there so that those aren't an issue.
Can you give us your number, so you don't have to say it over the mic, but give us your number, so we can give you-
I already gave it.
He gave it to me last time.
He has my contact.
Didn't, didn't they cut some trees over there?
Yes, one.
Didn't they cut a tree?
They cut one.
Trees around the block on-
Yeah.
After they started with me, I'm saying they're not busy, but they cut on the street behind me on Linden, and they cut on, on, on the other street, on the other-
They gotta have a reason. Did they say a reason? Wha- wha- what's the deal? Why they did?
Whatever the reason is, it wasn't expressed to me.
Okay, alright.
And I'm not trying to be, uh, outrageous about it. I just want some results. And if somebody's gonna do something about it, at least they know where my house is, you can at least let me know something. I, I'm being patient.
You'll be contacted tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other council reports?
My council report is good tonight. Uh, the park, Mooney Park, where the kids play at. I think the equipment started out brown. Charles' equipment turning out to be black. It's so filthy. I asked for it to be clean, sanitized, rather. It, it's not getting, you know, the, the court, it need to be, I guess, blowed off. Did you go out there? Did you, you see what I'm talking about?
I was out there, what's it, I was out there yesterday.
Yesterday.
Um, and I did speak with Desiree in Recreation. I believe she said that they have a company coming out tomorrow to pressure wash. Um, I, I suggested that they blow the debris off of the, the bonded rubber surfacing. I also said, look, if you're pressure washing, be careful on any painted surfaces, because we don't want to blow the, pressure wash the paint off the surfaces. But, I agree with you, particularly the roof, all of the newly painted, I say newly, all of the painted surfaces, all of that renovation work we did, it has turned a dark color, black, dark gray. Um, and I think that's because of all the automotive fumes, the exhaust on that corner. So, that's something we're gonna have to stay on top of, um, getting out there and more routinely cleaning it. Um, yes, I agree with you. It needs to be cleaned.
Yeah.
And that should be happening tomorrow.
But you did get a chance to see the playground equipment, right?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, other than that, uh, my council report is good tonight. Just want to make sure, uh, I still need to get that opportunity to go see the cameras. So, uh, whenever Ms. Lisa is open for it, I'll be ready to go see the cameras. So, right now, they should have had a chance to get everything fixed, huh?
Well, I mean, I think when you requested, Rick, Rick was out, so we had a generator installed for this complex, uh, two weeks ago. So, he was busy coordinating that. Uh, last week, he was out Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Uh, and of course, he was here Thursday. I believe he did reach out to you by email. He told me he had done that.
Yeah.
Um, so, and then we were off Friday. So, I think it just didn't, the timing didn't work out, but he's ready to sit down with you. Um, I know he's kind of sketched out, um, mapped out sort of what the cameras are covering, and where the future cameras would go, and what they would cover. Um, and he can show you the feeds from the cameras. Um, he actually approached me the other day. We had another young person, um, trying to throw something at one of the cameras in Jackson Park, and I told him, I said, look, at this point, this is like the third time this has happened, let's go ahead and notify our Juvenile Detectives Division. They can go out there and maybe talk to the kid, talk to the family. Um, clearly, we don't want people vandalizing the cameras and vandalizing other things in the park.
In a case like that, that kid shouldn't be able to come to the park. Something is there. You can't, and I'm not saying you doing this, you keep giving them a pass, that same kid gonna break in your house if he get a ride. We got to stop it right now.
I agree.
If anybody, and I like to get, they got red and white, they got red and blue lights that you could put up. You need bigger signs saying that the park is being monitored. We got to stop hiding it. Let it be known that the park is being monitored. You know, I can walk all around this building, and I come here at nighttime, but I'm, I'm looking at cameras, start, start looking me in my face. That's what I want in the park. That's what I've been asking for. That's what I need. I can't afford for nothing or nobody to get hurt in the park or damage done to equipment, brand-new equipment we already installed. So, that's what I'm asking for. So, this kid here, this your second time mentioning it, I don't know if that's his brother or his twin or whatever, but you can't let them tear it up and then do something. You know, we have to stop it before it get out of hand.
Well, I wanted to, before I forgot, I wanted to ask about the, um, Alita drainage, that servitude. Were you able to send out some letters with that servitude, getting access to, to do that drainage project?
Just confirming, you're talking about Alita or-
Alita, not Alita, Alita, A-L-E-A-T-A, over there in, uh, off of Harden Drive in Lincoln Park.
Right.
You know where I'm talking about, Mitch, huh? That, 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 we're gonna have to notify those three owners over there, those properties, to get that servitude. Uh, I've been trying to talk with one of them for a little bit, but just having a little difficulty.
Alright.
So, if we kind of get some official letters, uh, sent out to them, so where, uh, we can kind of get that, uh, communication going with them to try to explain it, because I'm, I'm not getting anywhere on that end.
Okay.
I just have a quick compliment to HPD and HFD. The, uh, there were two fires in my district last week. Uh, one was a grill fire that wasn't too big, but I think there was some damage, and I understand that HPD was the first to respond and put that out. And then that same night, or the next morning, uh, there was quite a large fire that caused some significant damage. HPD got there. It was reported by the neighbor within one minute busted doors down and saved people who were sleeping in their bed. And then Fire Department arrived about a minute or two later, put the fire out. So, I just wanted to pass on that. I got compliments from constituents and, um, certainly thankful that no one was injured and that the property will be dealt with how it is, but thankful to our first responders.
Thank you.
Pete? Uh, I would like to thank Courtney and Frankie for a meeting that we had yesterday. They're helping me address an issue, um, on three different properties inside of my district. Uh, we're looking into some rehab houses that are functioning as drug rehab homes. And I'm trying to figure out how they got the pass to get these houses inside of the neighborhood, when to me, it was just like a couple of months back when they didn't want a certain home in Whitmore Acres. Uh, so, they are working on that. I hope to have an answer back on that pretty soon. Uh, I thank them for sitting down with me to discuss this issue, and they are looking into it. Other, one other question, Charles, uh, the fence in MLK Park, do you know where they at with that?
I know that a contractor's been selected. I don't know when the start date is. I imagine the weather may have held him up some, but I can, I can try to get an answer for you.
My other question with that, being said, the tree that was taken down, do you know when they're gonna move that debris out of there?
I-
Well, actually, it might be on the adjacent property on the, on the other side where the fence will probably be, so, once the fence probably be up, it, that'll, that'll be okay, I, I would guess. Looking at it right now, with the fence not being there, it's hard to say if it's on the park property or the property on the other side.
Okay.
Yeah. A question, President Kip, ask you a question. You say drug rehab, help me out when you say drug rehab in your district.
Alright. I have several homes, one on Will Frazier, one on Crystal Street, and one in Clinton Court. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's acute, acute something rehab. Uh, they're using these homes for people with addictions that are living inside of these homes. And to me, the three locations, I don't have a problem with helping with people with addiction, but the three locations that they're in is the worst place in Hammond to put them in, to me, because of the simple fact that you could go four hundred feet and get your drugs at one, you can go two hundred feet at the other one and get your drug. And the other one is across the street from the alternative home, alternative school. And you can go six hundred one way and four hundred the other way to get something. My concern is, is how if they approved to get those homes there?
And, you know, I'm glad you brought that up. Uh, Charles, this probably don't have nothing to do with you. Mr. Mayor, I think we had, because I, we was concerned about on Phoenix Square. They got a big house on Phoenix Square. And I noticed, and I think my wife, uh, didn't you call somebody or something? On that, well, it was talked about to make sure that they not trying to make that house a, a drug house. And we say drug house in the community because you bringing drug heads to the community, and we got drug issues in the community already, so they ain't gonna do nothing but feed in the community.
Did Frankie or Courtney say that there was even any permitting given to them?
That's where we at right now, to, to-
They may have just-
To, to find out. But I, I'll say this, uh, will be publicly stated, that if that process was missed, I don't want them there, period. So, whatever process that we have to do to, uh, get them out, then I'm all for that, because one, the citizens in the neighborhood was not even informed of this. And a prime example of one, some elderly people live there, and when they came home, one of the people was sitting on their bench in their yard. And I know one of the women, if she was able to, that person wouldn't even be here no more today. Wouldn't be no question about talking to them, they'd have shot straight through their door. And, uh, again, Frankie them looking into it, I being patient with them, but I'm stating it now, I don't want them there. Because the process was not done the correct way, number one, when, if they find out that for me. And, uh, again, when they were talking about putting that home in Whitmore Acres, this place was packed out with people with their concerns about it. And if we gonna give, we got to be consistent across the board, is where I'm coming with this. Give same people in my neighborhoods the option to come in and say how they feel about this without somebody just putting something in on them like that.
Met with Frankie yesterday?
I met with her yesterday. I met with her yesterday at, uh, was it ten o'clock, right, Ms. Lisa? Yeah, ten o'clock. Yeah. So, uh, I spoke with the Attorney General's office on yesterday and was informed that the opinion has already been written, and it's in currently, currently in the final stages of review by the Attorney General. We should have an answer by the next council meeting in reference to the, uh, permit office. Uh, their opinion on that vote that was sent off, for their opinion on that. So, we should have something, uh, by the next council meeting. If not, hopefully, it'll be here by next week, I'm hoping, but I, for sure, we should have a response back on that by the next meeting. Also, the opinion, uh, that was voted on the last meeting was sent in to the Attorney General's office for their review, excuse me, with, uh, the Bobby McCaskin, uh, incident, for their Attorney General to make a review on that. That information was always, uh, uh, was sent in the, a couple of days ago. So, I'm hoping to receive a letter back on that when they get the process started on that, when they assign a, uh, I must say, ticket number, or maybe a case number, in order to be able to, to, to track that. My only concern with everything that I stated tonight is this. Uh, being consistent across the board and making sure everybody is treated the same way when it comes down to doing certain things. I, I, I know some of my colleagues that sit up here at this table with me do not face some of the same issues that I face inside of- do not face some of the same issues that I face inside of my district. And they're, I'm not gonna say that they're concerned, it's not a concern with it, but we have to be fair and have to be consistent with being fair. With that being said, that every citizen in Hammond, our cause is their cause. So we should be able to look at everybody's cause the same when it's being brought before us with some type of compassion. But I do know, because I, unlike Councilman Wells, I do read the Bible a lot, brother.
I told you I read the Bible. You all were lying.
And there's a, a passage in the Bible that sticks out to me when it says, "Know those that labor among you." In other words, we have to be consistent with everything that, that comes before us to make sure that people know that you care. Every time is not a moment to, how could I say this, with throwing someone under the bus or trying to make somebody look bad. Certain things you won't be able to handle all the time in a closed-door meeting. Some things have to be said publicly where people understand that your concern is being heard and it's being addressed. So with that being said, I hope everyone had a great Easter, had some good food, had a lot of eggs.
No eggs, I-
Yeah. But moving forward, my prayers that we continue to do our best to strive to try to move this city forward and make Hammond one of the best places that we can have here in the South. Because Hammond is a good place. We just gotta continue to make it a better place. And I understand that Rome wasn't built in one day, but when a ship has been traveling down the sea in many different directions, some people can't handle when you wanna take a turn, but sometimes change is good. And if you still working on a typewriter and we dealing with computers, you gonna be stuck behind. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.